Good afternoon and welcome to our last meeting of April. Appreciate everybody in the audience today and those of you watching that's on Electric City Television. Emication tonight will be given by the mayor pro tem, Don Chapman, in respects to the pleas relayed by Councilmember Beatrice Thompson. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight for our last meeting of April, we give thanks for the change in this wonderful weather called spring and all the season and all the season bring with it. And as well as many blessings you show us each and every day, we ask that you continue to watch over and guide us. As with this and all times, we give thanks for the men and women both far and near who protect us and our freedoms so that we're able to gather here tonight. We pray and give thanks for our fighter firefighter firefighters and police officers as they protect us locally each day. We also give thanks for our city departments. As each individual works to serve this community, we pray for their safety. And now as we pray for our city administration and this council as we conduct this meeting, may that all we say and do be in the best interest of our citizens, our city, but most of all, be pleasing in your eyes. And in memory of my mother, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I will have a couple of things that we'd like to do. First of all, we have a special little guy, you know, with a little microphone here. Gregory Rowe. I'm gonna ask Gregory and his dad maybe to come down. While they're coming, I met Gregory a month or so ago and he represents our community in a very special way. Not only is he a young fighter, but he's a bright little guy. He was a 2015 North American Sports Karate Association National Champion. And he just returned from Chicago. He won that title in January. He was also, last year Gregory fought in Chicago, Philadelphia, Washington DC, Atlanta, Tampa Bay, Florida, Orlando, Charlotte, Minnesota, Nashville, Myrtle Beach, Miami. He just flew all over the place. You know, so he's well traveled. He's picking up the frequent flyer miles. And he also changed, he trains with Chad Allen Fight Club and the Marty Night Karate, which are both located here and associated here. So I thought, he let me wear his belt and I thought I'd bring him up here tonight and just introduce him to the community. Gregory, you got anything to say? You want to say to these folks?
Thank you for having me.
Well, it's good for you to be here. Thank you for what you and your dad do and you keep up the good work, okay? Give me a handshake. Good deal. You mind shaking my councilmember's hands?
Steve Harvey Show.
Yeah, we have to get the old Steve Harvey Show.
You're welcome.
Got a proclamation? I'm gonna ask Chief to come down. And this is a proclamation. I'm gonna get the chief maybe to say a few words after the proclamation, but the National Police Week. And this is to recognize National Police Week 2016 in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Anderson Police Department. And whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, 20,789 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the Anderson Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Office Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 30 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 133 officers killed in 2015 and 122 officers killed in 2014. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Counterlight Visual on the evening of May 15, 2016. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. And the United States flag should be flown at half staff. Now therefore, now therefore be it resolved by the Anderson City Council, do proclaim, hereby proclaim, May 21st, May 15 through 21st as National Police Week in the city of Anderson and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Thank you, Chief.
I'd just like to express my thanks to Mayor and Council for recognizing again National Police Week. We're in the process right now of renew it, redoing our monument there at the courthouse. So this year we will not celebrate in May with our ceremony through the Fraternal Order of Police. It will be later in the fall. But I would like for just the public to recognize and maybe express appreciation that week and show some support for law enforcement. That's much appreciated.
Thank you, Chief.
The minutes of our April the 11th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Make a motion that we accept them as presented.
First, I'm Mr. Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harvey. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the minutes of April 11th passed unanimously. We have two items of old business and that first item is request the second and third reading of Ordinance 16-07 to rezone 407 Concord Road from R15 Single Family Residential to NP Neighborhood Professional. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we described to you last meeting was that this piece of property is a, was initially a single family structure. It has been vacant and is vacant now, but there is the proposal to use the property if it is rezoned in order to operate a massage therapy office. The zoning classification being requested is Neighborhood Professional, which as you know, will allow this type of an office use as far as business offices and health services, but it does not include any type of retail service in this particular category. So from that standpoint, it is a compatible zoning district being less intense in its uses with the surrounding residential uses. A few years ago, an adjacent property at 405 Concord Road was rezoned to this same category. So there is the opportunity for these vacant structures to be put back into productive use if it is rezoned. Bear in mind that just simply the rezoning itself is not the only step in order to convert this property to commercial use. If it is rezoned, then all of your necessary building codes, your parking regulations, landscaping requirements would have to be met in order to make that conversion complete. Since the last time, there have been no further inquiries, calls, questions, comments from the public regarding this. And I would remind you that the Planning Commission at their April meeting recommended approval of the rezoning.
Any questions? When we talked about it a little bit at last meeting, any additional questions or comments for Linda or Maurice?
Mr. Mayor? We haven't had any more anybody come forward.
No, sir.
Having any problems with this.
Not at all.
Okay. In that, in that vein, I will say that we need to go ahead with second reading of this ordinance.
We have a first and a second reading by Mr. Lockridge. Second by Dr. Thompson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on third and final.
First by Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Roberts, John Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Other item of old business, request second and third reading of Ordinance 16-08 to amend the sewer use of ordinance. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We spent a great deal of time at the last meeting talking about what the FOG ordinance is and the reasons for it. I'll touch very briefly on those. And you had a few questions that you wanted us to respond to and I will share a little bit of that information. In terms of the history, in 2014, the city entered into an agreement with the EPA in order to specifically address the, a number of items in our sewer system, but principally this had to do with preventing or eliminating sanitary sewer system overflows. And what we have agreed to with the EPA was to take specific action within specific time frames. One of those activities is this particular FOG ordinance. And FOG stands for fats, oils, and grease. Fats, oils, and grease certainly are one of the primary causes of your sanitary sewer overflows. And anything that we can do that helps prevent that from occurring is certainly at the root cause of this particular ordinance. We shared with you that we have approximately 295 food service establishments, both inside the city and outside the city, but on our sewer system. So this ordinance would pertain to all of those 295 existing establishments. And this affects the brown grease as opposed to yellow grease. Brown grease being that that comes from your sinks, your dishwashers, your floor drains, your food prep areas. Yellow grease being that that you use for frying. So there is a difference between those two. A couple of the primary things that are important that we touched on last time will be, one of the items is actually how a food service establishment is classified. One of the ways that we obtain that information is in our implementation process, we will send out a questionnaire to our food service establishments, asking them certain information. If they have grease control devices, how many meals do they prepare a day? How many tables do they have? Things of that nature that will help us classify these establishments properly. The way you're classified, class one would be something like a deli or a coffee shop. Class three might be some type of meat and three, full-service restaurant. A class five would be an institutional use, like a hospital, a jail, a school, that type of a use. How you're classified also is indicative of the size and type of grease control device that you have in your establishment. A couple of things that, really four things that I'd like to share that's kind of new information since the last time. One of those is that based upon the restaurants that we've talked to and met with, we have, we know that a number of our existing establishments, food service establishments, already have grease mechanisms in place. Many of them also have really good protocols in place that are like good housekeeping details, things that keep their own kitchens and food prep areas running efficiently and effectively. We also know that there are franchise operations that have corporate standards already in place. They're doing this in their other locations. So some of, in those cases, some of those standards already exist in your existing restaurants. And we do have some restaurants who have facilities here in Anderson, but they might also be located in Spartanburg, or Greer, or Greenwood, or Clemson. And for those cities that already have FOG ordinances in place, these particular restaurants are familiar with what those guidelines are. The last kind of new piece of that type of information is that if, for your newer food service establishments, they already, for the most part, as far as we know, they're already meeting the requirements because the plumbing code required them to do so. So I think what, what we're telling you in this instance is we think there are far more restaurants out there that are meeting your FOG requirements than there are those who have nothing in, in place. But again, the, the survey or the questionnaire will help us learn more about our restaurants and knowing what they have and how these regulations actually impact them. With EPA, we have agreed to a timeframe in order to put these regulations in, in place. They have approved our plans. They reviewed, have reviewed our ordinance. They've also reviewed and approved our timetable. Our timetable is to begin the survey process, this of course is assuming you take action on this tonight. We would begin that process in May or June and we would look to have our inspections in the fall and then full, really full compliance a year from now. So in the late summer, early, late summer of 2017. One thing that you ask about in terms of what type of devices, we've looked at everything and in, and also considering the classifications, we've looked at everything and our ordinance provides for grease control devices that are gravity grease interceptors. And those are things that we know better as being the underground tanks that restaurants have. You can also have essentially a grease trap reservoir that sits in your kitchen. It could be under the sink. And they make another type, which is a hydro mechanical grease trap, which is like a tank with water in it that skims the grease off of it for, for its disposal. In terms of cost, we, we do have, I'm gonna give you some figures. We're giving these as industry examples of what is out there. This doesn't necessarily mean this is what local vendors would charge, but I think it would give you an, an indication of, of what we've seen in the industry. Those industry examples could range from $3,700 all the way up to $9,500. And that runs the gamut from all of those different types of devices to taking into consideration your actual space requirements, how your, your food service establishment is laid out, what type of device, whether gravity is, is even available to, as an, as a reasonable accommodation or not. So there's an awful lot of variables that go into that equation in determining what might work for, for any particular restaurant. The other thing that I think that is important to recognize is that this ordinance provides for understanding and knowing more about a restaurant. If, if your restaurant, there are devices out there or alternatives out there that would work within your particular constraints. So if it's, if it's a grease control device that needs to be under the sink, if it's one that needs to be over in the corner where it's out of the way, there are opportunities to work with our staff person assigned to this program and to find whatever the solution is if it's something out of the ordinary. We talked a little bit about whether grandfathering was allowable. The, the simple answer to that is no. The level playing field is essentially that every food service establishment will be required to have some type of grease control device. And that grease control device again is governed by what type of, of food service establishment you are, what your classic, excuse me, what your classification is. In the end, this is about, it's, it's about the environment, it's about health, it's about property preservation, and it's about really doing what EPA is requiring us to do in terms of maintaining our, our $90 million asset in our wastewater system. We've got Jeff Caldwell, our Utilities Director here tonight, as well as Assistant City Manager David McEwen. Both of them have worked very hard on this ordinance and worked with EPA to find the answers and make this mandate as least impactful on our businesses as we can and still meet the EPA's requirements. I, I think that addresses the things that you specifically asked for. If not, ask, ask, ask us tonight and we'll do our best to answer.
Thank you. Good job. Comments, questions?
A couple of questions.
Then Mr. Chapman?
In, in reading some of this material that was handed out, just for informational purposes, there'll be a new FOG coordinator position created, is that correct? As part of this?
Yes, that's, that is correct.
What, tell me a little bit about what this job will encompass because the material I read that this inspector would just go out and do one inspection a year, what other duties will they do? You know, and does it warrant a full-time position?
Yes. Well, they will do those annual inspections. They're actually on our records right now. We have 295 of those to do. So that is over one a day in working days per year. That, that position will also, in addition to making those visits. And keep in mind, those visits can't be made at any time. We want to be as, as least impactful on that FSE as possible. So we don't want to visit during their rush lunch hour. If they do serve breakfast, we don't want to be during their, in, in dinner, any of those rush hours. We want to be able to work with their schedule to, to perform the inspections. They will also be performing some of our backflow, cross connection control duties that is crossover between sewer and water in our Utilities Division. So they'll be doing, doing those things.
So you're saying you can only do one inspection a day?
I, no, you won't be able to.
It takes that long to do one?
No, no, no. I mean, you'll be do, be able to do more than one a day, but there's the scheduling of those to make sure you get in at the right times and things like that. It will take a full-time person to, and along with the other job duties that they will have.
And who does that backflow position now? Is that something that's gonna be?
It's, that's in the Water Department right now. My administrative assistant does a lot of the, a lot of the paperwork, record-keeping stuff. But our Water Manager kind of handles that position as be, as holding an inspector position, but it will be someone who is going out and inspecting those regularly.
Would it, would it be safe to say that the first go around, every business in, every food service establishment is gonna have to pay $400 to have their grease trap pumped the first time? Because from what I'm reading is that, that it needs to be pumped every 90 days and it's a requirement, but on a case-by-case basis, if they provide you with information, they can get a waiver for longer. So with the first go around, is everybody gonna have to spend that $400 the first go around?
The $400 is an average for a thousand gallon tank. Some of these will have 500 gallon tanks, which will be less. The ones that are under the counter or that, some of those hydro mechanicals are self-cleaning and those are just put in a container that will keep it contained and it can be thrown in trash. So not everybody will face that, but more your full-service restaurants, your buffets and institutional.
They get, they have to wait to, for their first inspection before they can come back and request a waiver, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yes, yes.
Because we can't use any historical data that they have now to utilize to maybe request a waiver before they happen to spend the money upfront.
Well, I mean, keep in mind, this is going over a, over the span of a year. So it would be sometime during that year, they would have to be doing it anyway. So this will just take the place of one of those.
Mr. Chapman?
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The, the first one is, is that all, all businesses that are connected to the city, whether they're county or city, will be held by this standard?
This, this particular ordinance is the city sewer system, yes.
Right. So anybody that's connected to that, whether they're county or city.
Right.
And then under funding, it has, future program years will be anticipated to be supported by FSE, which is the food service establishment and the FOG rate schedule. Is that, that, at that time, it'll come back to our committee and we'll discuss if and when and what fees will be?
We, we are not including any fees at, at this time, but yes, the ordinance provides that you can. So should we decide to do that, that would come back to you.
Right. It says after the first year, it'll, it'll, the future year, anticipated costs may be supported by fees, but that'll come back to us before?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, you know, and I think as we said before, you know, and I think several of us had concerns is the existing smaller businesses that are gonna be impacted by, and affecting their business, because if they're having to pay a pump rate and then they're having to pay to upgrade systems and, you know, that there's some way that we're trying to ease that, ease them into it as opposed to hitting it hard from day one.
That's exactly, that's exactly why there's no fee this, this year. And, and, and you know, we'll do our best to, to keep that as long as we can. But as in with any new program, it's certainly prudent for us to see how this program functions, you know, how, how much time does it really take? What are the other?
Sure.
Things that we will work out those? Things that we, will work out those details about how long it takes to help somebody understand what they need to do, or what their alternatives are, or how we can be more business-friendly in the process, those kinds of things.
Anything else? Mr. Harbin? Then Mr. Lockridge.
So help me clarify that real quick to what Councilman Stewart asked. So let's say February 1st, Restaurant A has their grease trap pumped and serviced, and we call them and say, hey, we're going to come inspect you February 15th. They wouldn't have to turn around and repump.
No, we, we will.
They're already on a cycle of pumping. They would say, this is what I pumped, this is how much they got, this is what they did with it.
We would probably, in that case, postpone their, their original inspection until their next pump.
Until their next pump.
Because we do need to see that in, inside the tank or, or the device, that it is plumb properly, no modifications been made.
And that's sort of what, I mean, so we're not going to make them call up and say, hey, we're coming to inspect you, so you got to pump it for now, two weeks.
No.
Mr. Lockridge?
He asked, he asked one question.
Great. Anything else, guys? Yes, ma'am, this is the second reading.
Second reading.
I need to be approved this on second reading.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have an 8-1 vote, Mr. Curvin opposing.
Question.
Yes.
It's being funded by the sewer ordinance, is that correct? I mean, by, by our sewer fees, is that correct?
It's been by your, yes, by your sewer revenues.
And in anticipation, if we have to make any changes, would that affect the sewer rates of our sewer, cut all of our sewer customers?
Well, you implemented, you already implemented your increases two, two years in a row for this particular program and for the things that we knew we were going to have to do, which is why we're saying at this juncture, we're, we're using our existing revenues in order to fund this program.
But I, I guess what I'm asking, in, in the future, if we have to make changes, would it come back and increase all of our citizens' sewer rates just to fund what the restaurants are doing, maybe improperly?
You mean like when we had that second inspector?
Well.
Because I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think it's fair that our normal citizens should have to pay for the grease trap for what restaurants are doing.
Well, the, now, the, the sewer revenues that you, that we're talking about, where you put the increase in place, it's not funding the grease trap for an individual restaurant. What it's funding is our C-MOM program that had 10 different items that we're having to meet, part of which, some of which we've already done. We've, for example, we've mapped 270 miles of sewer lines that are out there. That was one of the program requirements that EPA mandated that we do. So out of all of those, the implementation of the FOG ordinance is one of those steps. Jeff and David, that.
That's, that's right, Ms. McConnell. Councilmember Stewart, I, I think what you're saying is, as we get into, you know, this initial, this, this first year, we're going to fund it through existing EPA revenues that, that we have. But as you move forward, and we have built into this ordinance, we have the ability for the council to fund the program by fee. And the reason you might consider doing something like that is to provide a fairness, essentially, of rates where you don't have the residential sewer customers paying for the program that's regulating the food service establishments.
I have one more follow-up.
Mr. Chapman?
Because I realize I, I missed the first reading, but, I mean, nevermind, nevermind. I'm good.
Okay. I entertain a motion for the second, third, third and final reading.
I move that we adopt the third and final reading on this ordinance.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have an 8-1.
Mr. Mayor? I want to, I want to thank Mr. Oldham, Hugh Oldham, who was one of my constituents in my ward for the wonderful article he put in the Independent Mail. He, he did a very good job of expressing what damage it could do to sewer lines and that kind of thing. So we appreciate folks that spend their time and effort to do that kind of thing. We always do because it makes our job easier. So thank you, Mr. Oldham.
Mr. Roberts?
I'd also note, appreciate what Mr. Lockridge said, and this is something that none of us wanted to do. Nobody's happy about this decision. It doesn't feel good. It's, Mr. Curvin, last meeting, you say there's EPA, big, big brother mandating us to do something else, and, but we have a responsibility back to our citizens as well, because if we don't implement this program, we're going to be facing some fines from the EPA that we're going to start immediately. So this was a heartburn, as we said last time, but it's a hard thing to swallow. And I want to commend staff, I've talked with, especially Mr. McEwen, quite a bit on, on how the city is going to work with our restaurants and make certain we, we hold, hold that to the highest level, but we're going to work with the restaurants to try to ease this burden, because at the end of the day, us citizens will, they will pass that on to us. So I just want to make that clear.
Good.
But appreciate everything from everybody.
Good comments. Administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell?
We're almost at the end of April, and we have a couple of things to bring to your attention. On Thursday, the 28th, the Concerned Citizens of the East Side, that community group will be meeting at 5:00 PM at Hope Baptist Church. On Friday, and Friday and Saturday, Art on the Town. This is our opportunity to showcase downtown with art in a lot of different ways, including some of the businesses will have art on display in their, in their business locations, and we'll also have new pieces of sculpture, public art, public sculpture that will be installed downtown. So that'd be an opportunity to see some new landscape out there on our downtown spaces. This event on Friday night starts at 5:00 and goes until 8:00, and then everyone can move to Carolina Ren Park where there will be culmination of that Art on the Town event for Friday night. There'll be a band and a lot of fun activities that night for all ages. Then it continues on Saturday with Art on the Town. There's actually Kids Art Day from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM in Carolina Ren Park. So there are a number of performers and ways where art, not just, not just sculptures, not just paintings, but art in a variety of ways will be explored, and it'd be a lot of fun. Encourage you to come out for that. Then looking ahead into May, we'll have our first Sounds in the Park downtown, which is on Tuesday, May the 3rd, from 7:00 until 9:00 at Carolina Ren Park. And on Friday night, I know Dr. Thompson has her West Side Center Gala that evening at 7:00 PM. So we're ending April with a bang and starting May off just like an eventful spring. That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. Harbin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.